Okay, I'd like to call this meeting. If you're Newark City Council order.
Autumn, please call the roll.
Mr. Roletta?
Here.
Mr. Blake?
Here.
Mr. Bub?
Here.
Mr. Cost?
Here.
Mrs. Floyd?
Here.
Mr. Guthrie?
Here.
Ms. Hall?
Here.
Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Mr. Murmy?
Here.
And Mr. Rapp?
Here.
We have all here this evening. If you rise with me for the invocation by Mr. Johnson, followed by the pledge. Mr. Rapp?
Just speaking prayer. Lord, we come to you as thankful people. Thankful for the day, thankful for the privilege of living in this country, this state, this county, and this wonderful city, Newark. Be with us in our deliberations. Bless those in need. Bless those who have had great joy this week. May we serve you and may we, in those who count us, to be thoughtful, make thoughtful decisions. Be with us all. We pray in your name. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge.
(Inaudible) from the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Next on the agenda this evening, we have caucus, that's what the council discussing that may be on the agenda tonight. Do we have anything? Okay. Next, we have the minutes of the July 20th, 2015 meeting. Do we have a motion to approve that?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Rapp.
Second.
Second by Mr. Johnson. All those in favor, sign and file by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Mr. Roletta, thank you for your correction. We missed the other earlier, so thank you. We have three reports this evening, reports of standing committees, one from finance, one from service, and one from capital improvements. Without objection, those will be received and filed. And we have one report this evening from city officials, one from Barb Jones, York City Income Tax Administrator. The income tax revenue reports ending July 15th, 2015. Again, without objection, those will be received and filed. Two communications this evening, one from Paul Moran and one from Theresa Moats. Those will be received and filed. And next on the agenda, we have a public hearing this evening. We're gonna go ahead and open the public hearing. Autumn, would you please read it?
Notice is hereby given that the York City Council shall at a later date to be determined and announced thereafter take action upon ordinance number 15-14. Said ordinance accepts a proposed amendment to the zoning map attached to ordinance 08-33A, which would allow the change of zoning classification of certain real property generally described as 13.457 acres, more or less, Sixth Street, North Licking County, Ohio. The amendment would change the zoning of the property from LI Limited Industrial District to MFR Multi-Family Residence District, zoning code of the city of Newark, Ohio.
This is your chance to speak for or against this public hearing. Basically, tonight, after we close the public hearing, we're gonna be reading it for a second time and voting, so if you wanna speak on it, now's your chance, either way. Either for or against, if you please just raise your hand and I'll have you come up. Anybody for or against who would like to speak on this public hearing? Anyone like to speak on this public hearing? Okay. We will close the public hearing. Autumn, would you please read 15-14? Your second reading.
Ordinance 15-14 by Mr. Blake, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Cost, Mr. Rapp, an ordinance changing the zoning classification of certain real property generally described as 13.457 acres, more or less, Sixth Street, city of Newark, Licking County, Ohio, from that of LI Limited Industrial District to MFR Multi-Family Residence District.
You've heard the second reading of 15-14. What does your wish?
Mr. President.
Mr. Cost? I'd like to make a motion to adopt 15-14.
Motion by Mr. Cost?
Second.
Second by Mr. Blake. Is there any discussion on 15-14?
Mr. President.
Mr. Blake?
I just wanna say that I think this is, you know, thank you very much. This can be a very worthwhile project. I think I've worked with Linda and Tom and Ms. Murphy, and it's something that's gonna be needed in our community. And I know Linda and Tom have been in several different meetings trying to address concerns and things, and now moving forward, I think it's gonna be a partnership with the neighborhood. And so, I think this is a great thing, and thank you so much for this effort and for this proposal. So, thank you.
Any other discussion on 15-14? Seeing none, Autumn, please call the roll to vote.
Mr. Roletta?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Guthrie?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Murmy?
Yes.
And Mr. Rapp?
Yes.
15-14 passes 10-0. Thank you. Next on the agenda, if you were here just for that, you can take off now.
Thank you very much. Really appreciate it.
Next, we have our first section this evening, your comments from citizens. There's two places for comments from citizens. One's now, and one would be after the legislation. If you'd like to comment, just raise your hand and I'll recognize you, and I'll have you come up after I recognize you. William?
11223, Union Street. Now, I'm gonna believe this, I think I might be wacky or everything. I have a squirrel. His name's Bushy, and he told me he would like to see Union Street paved. And you'd like to know what the York City Council's gonna do about it? I hear the street maintenance people, let's see what the, let's see, street maintenance staff has to say about that. And my case worker, they bring some up to me, she went to my, she went back to my house. My, she blinked me about the alley, back where I live at, it's all rough, so I'd just see that paved too. And let me just say, she'd be getting on to me about it, and if I didn't say anything, I was here about it, so I was wondering what the city's gonna do. But I passed.
Thank you, William. Was there any drinking going on when you were talking to this squirrel?
No.
Just wanted to check. Anyone else for citizens' comments this evening, ma'am? If you come up and just give us your name and address for the record, please.
Hello. My name is Yvonne Gonzalez. I live at 228 Boylston Avenue, here in Newark. The problem I'm having, and have had for the past five years that I've lived in that house, is that the neighborhood, they're dealing drugs. Officer Conley has told us they know what they're doing, we're investigating. I've heard this three years in a row. The police have been on that street probably five or six times in the past five or six days. On the way here, a guy pulled up for the second day in a row with some working man's tools, I'm sure, saws and all of that, pulled him out of his car and dropped him off in front of the house for the people to buy. Barry Cost and his wife owns that house. Those two houses were Orville and William Live. It's a known drug house. Everybody on that street knows it. We have been to the mayor's office complaining. We have been to the chief of police. We have been to Metro. I can't tell you the time we've spent to try to get help in our neighborhood. I can't let my grandkids play in the street. Kids have, I mean, we've called Children's Services. We have done everything humanly possible. We have to have some help there. I would invite any of you to come, just one day, and live on our street. My neighbor lives, she's called. I told the police when they were there, they're kicking in people's doors, I got a vacant house beside mine. Okay? They're in there smoking crack in the middle of the night. It's 15 feet from my house. I do not want my house burnt down. If I could move, afford to move, I'd move out of that neighborhood. I can't. Okay? I'm poor. But we have to have some help on that street. That's all there is. The police come, they have scanners. I mean, it's ridiculous, the things that are going on there. The house beside, on the other side, dealing drugs. I mean, and the police know. They tell us, we're investigating. How long does it take to investigate? Three years later, and nobody's, they're still not shutting it down? These guys, I called the landlord, Joyce Thorpe. She's a realtor, a RE/MAX realtor, and told her, "They're dealing drugs out of your rental. It's a Metro." Surely, somebody can do something about this. It's out of control. It's out of control. All three of those houses are Metro, all three of them. And why should we, as residents and taxpayers, pay for them to deal drugs? And the landlord get the money for it? That's not right. It's really wrong. I'm tired of it. Somebody, we have to have help, and that street's gotta be straightened up. Kids can't even play. How would you like your grandkids coming to my neighborhood? They can't even be on the street. It's bad. And we have to have some help. Actually, I've emailed Mike DeWine's office, because that's how serious it is. A guy pulled a gun in the middle of the afternoon, one day last week, and said in front of all the kids, "I told another guy, I'm gonna kill you." I mean, it's, somebody's gonna get killed, and then what? Just another murder? Another kid dead? No. That's ridiculous. And we need help, and that's why I'm here tonight.
Thank you, ma'am. Your address is 228 Boylston?
Yes, it is.
Thank you. I know the safety director's here, hopefully he's taking some notes there. Thank you.
Well, thank you.
Anyone else for this first section?
No Cheryl's there, just enough person to walk walks on my street. Everybody knocks on my door, first thing they say, "Can you call her, please?" But you know what? They can pick up the phone, too. Them kids on the street, no one watches them. They're out there at seven o'clock in the morning, sometimes until after midnight, and no one watches them. They don't care how their kids dress, they don't care what their kids are doing. Little girl, she was walking down the street. She had to be four years old. She got all the way from Bullicson all the way to the beer joint. And I said, "Where you going?" "I don't know." I said, "Autumn, turn around and go back home." Her mother, on the porch sleeping, had no idea where her child was. Lady next door to Yvonne, she don't watch her kid. I called the police department, and I said, and I don't remember exactly what happened, but that police officer came there, got that child, and brought that child back to that lady's house, stood there and said, "Is this your child?" Now, if I was a white girl, a stranger, he didn't know me from Adam, I could say that was my child, and I could have kidnapped her and been gone. He didn't get no ID, nothing. All he said, "Is this your child?" That was it, and he left. Why is that? That is so wrong. Something needs to be changed on that street. I mean, there is bad streets in Newark. I lived here almost 20 years, and this is the worst it's gotten. So, please, someone, give us some help. And not only did she say about the shooting, there was another where he stuck a gun in his girlfriend's face. Same house, just different time. They know the police is coming, 'cause they got scanners, and they scatter like roaches. They wait 15, 20 minutes, start all over again. We're gonna be just like every other town. Thanks.
What was your address, ma'am?
Oh, I'm at 213.
Thank you.
And it's like, right, not on her corner, but this way. I could stand on my front porch and see everything, and I go right, that's the way. And another thing that happened, we seen a guy come down the street, get in someone's mailbox. Take his mail and walk down the street. We called the police department, we showed them on camera that just happened, and he said, "Well, I can't see anything." Everybody else could see it, but the police officer couldn't see it. That's another crazy thing.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else for this section of citizens' comments? Okay, we'll go on to resolutions. Oh, I'm sorry. Ma'am?
My name is Kay Kittle. I live at 48 North 21st Street. My husband and I own yesterday's pub. We've been there, be 36 years this October. There's a house across the street from us that has been boarded up, the windows broken out, abandoned for two and a half years, trash piled up. And you know, it's a shame. It seems like the only time I come here is to make a complaint, and it shouldn't be that way. I mean, I feel bad when I do that. I should come just to see what's going on in our fierce city, but something should be... I don't even know who owns the property. I don't know who to contact, other than yours truly here.
Would you happen to have an address on that house? Just so I'm looking up.
You know, I don't. We own the one next door to the restaurant, that's 42. It must be like 40, maybe, or...
Should be an odd number, it's across the street.
It's been abandoned for over two ye... I've seen houses with red X's that are in better shape than that place. It's pretty hard to run a nice neighborhood restaurant with that kind of a situation. And another thing, the alley behind our restaurant has holes big enough to bury someone in, and that's an egress into our back parking lot. I'd kinda like to see if something could be done in respect to that. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else this section? Okay, we're gonna go to resolutions on the second reading, 15-65.
Resolution 15-65 by Mr. Cost, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Rapp. A resolution appropriating monies for the current expenses of the Missable Corporation.
You've heard the second reading of 15-65. What does your wish?
Mr. President.
Mr. Blake?
Move to adopt 15-65.
Motion by Mr. Blake?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Floyd. Is there any discussion on 15-65? Seeing none, Autumn, please call the roll to vote.
Mr. Roletta?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Guthrie?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Murmy?
Yes.
And Mr. Rapp?
Yes.
15-65 passes 10-0. Next, we have 15-67.
Resolution 15-67 by Mr. Cost, Mr. Murmy, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Rapp. A resolution of intent to vacate a portion of a 16 and a half foot wide alley, as shown on the flat of the John R. Hughes addition, as recorded in the flat book three at page 13 of the Licking County Flat Records, located between properties at 279 and 295 Wilson Street.
You've heard the second reading of 15-67. What does your wish? Mr. Johnson, motion is to adopt. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Rapp. Is there any discussion on 15-67? Seeing none, Autumn, please call the roll to vote.
Mr. Roletta?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Guthrie?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Murmy?
Yes.
And Mr. Rapp?
Yes.
15-67 passes 10-0. Next, we have resolutions on the first reading, 15-68.
Resolution 15-68 by Mr. Cost, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Rapp. A resolution appropriating monies for the current expenses of the Missable Corporation.
15-68 will be held for a second reading in two weeks. Next, we have 15-69.
Resolution 15-69 by Mr. Cost, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Rapp. A resolution appropriating monies for the current expenses of the Missable Corporation.
15-69 will be held for a second reading in two weeks. The final this evening is 15-70.
Resolution 15-70 by Mr. Cost, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Rapp. A resolution of intent to appropriate the real estate known as parcel number 05-280590-00.000, North Licking County, for maintaining and improving Mount Vernon Road within the city of Newark, Ohio, authorizing the mayor to give notice to the owner of such lands as required by law and declaring an emergency.
15-70 is on the first reading, but it is an emergency, so it does only get one reading. What does your wish? Mr. President, Mr. Cost?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt 15-70.
Motion by Mr. Cost, second by Mrs. Floyd. Is there any discussion on 15-70? Seeing none, Autumn, please call the roll to vote.
Mr. Roletta?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Guthrie?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Murmy?
Yes.
And Mr. Rapp?
Yes.
15-70 passes 10-0. And that's it for the legislation this evening. Now, the second opportunity for comments from citizens. Do we have anyone?
Good evening. Mark Frazer, FRA, IZER, 20 West North Street, Newark, Ohio. I have a prepared statement. It's about the upcoming Safety Committee meeting next week. In the light of the upcoming Safety Committee meeting and the ongoing discussions with our community regarding part-time fire staffing, I want to clearly and concisely review the arguments to get to the bottom of the community impacts of instituting this model and the cost-benefit analysis of performing such a measure. The following items I wish to discuss. Number one, part-time firefighters are less dedicated. Part-time firefighters are still dedicated professionals that pride themselves performing a difficult job that makes a difference in people's lives in our community. Part-time firefighting is often part of the course, especially in a career in which most full-time firefighters are career until retirement, and it can be blind luck when finding a full-time employment, forcing many to work as a volunteer or part-time firefighter at several small rural departments to gain experience. They maintain their certifications and desire to work in this profession even without a pension and benefits in the hope of continuing in this career that will eventually lead to their full-time employment with benefits. It would be foolish to think that a part-time firefighter working at a department with the opportunity of full-time positions would be unreliable and present anything other than their best. Although the preference would always be full-time employment, what is a firefighter to do that has not yet found that full-time opportunity they seek? Number two, part-time firefighters are low quality. A part-time firefighter maintains the same certification and credentials as full-time firefighters. Fully trained and often experienced for years through part-time and volunteer work, their experience can be extremely beneficial and would be complementary to full-time firefighters. If an applicant would be of less experience or lacking accreditation, they should not be hired. With these positions, competition should bring forth the best candidates from throughout the county and within Newark, and the hiring process should find the most ideal candidates for our community, hopefully filling these positions with residents from Newark. Part-time firefighters are likely to leave to seek full-time employment. With 57% of the fire department with a second job, it is more likely that a part-time firefighter would maintain their status in Newark and work a full-time job elsewhere, giving up other part-time employment that offers no upward mobility. With Newark offering competitive wages to part-time firefighters, it is not beyond the realm of belief or possibilities that our wages, facilities, equipment, and experience would compel part-time workers to maintain their positions in Newark's fire department. Part-time firefighters take away from full-time careers. Part-time firefighters would enable the opportunity of transitioning part-time firefighters to full-time, and enable experience and careers that go hand in hand. It'd be possible to have a better idea of the qualification of the full-time candidate firsthand, and allow full-time firefighters to have greater awareness of the demands of their community. This would not take away from full-time careers, but provide necessary staffing in times when the budget does not allow for additional full-time firefighters. We'll be able to have adequate staffing levels with an augmented staff instead of low staffing levels in a single model. Part-time firefighters would not benefit our community. Part-time firefighters would stabilize the overtime pay, improve staffing levels, and develop local firefighters with greater experience. The possibility of providing additional wages locally to a greater number of individuals improves our tax base and will attract additional residents due to improved safety, employment, and service. The goal was not to remove overtime or replace our firefighters with part-time employees, but in times in which there are 11 firefighters out on sick or disability, our firefighters can maintain their staffing without overworking our dedicated professionals. The benefits speak for themselves: better response time, higher staffing levels, and reduced budgetary constraints. It is an obvious solution. It would prevent any additional unnecessary safety levy, further plunging into the city to borrow money from the rainy day fund to maintain operations. Delaying action does not have a financial impact. To delay action causes further spending and has a waterfall effect of pushing back the planning, the approving, the interviewing, and the eventual staffing. It is naive to state that what you're doing by delaying this does not have an impact. It is the only way to have the nine to 14 recommended firefighters to enable a stabilization of staffing. To continue to not act will only create greater danger to the public when they need help, and will continue to drain the firefighters risking their lives. To continue to spend the $218,686 through July 4th, or $31,284 per month in overtime, will compound this problem with delay. I hope that you judiciously look at these options and realize that inaction does have dire consequences for our community. Thank you for the time. Best of luck next week. I hope that you guys really look at this issue and find a solution. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Frazer. And no math this evening. Is there anyone else that would like to...
I just wanna make a comment one more, and then I'll be quiet.
Just tell us your name.
Yvonne Gonzalez, 228 Boylston Avenue. Since the law director is here, is it not illegal for landlords to rent and knowingly continue with metro housing, collecting rent, knowing that their tenants are drug dealers? I'm wondering what's, you know, because I made Joyce Thorpe aware, I made Barry Cost aware, everybody's aware of what's going on. The kids in the neighborhood know, so, yeah, I'm thinking that that's, they should be able to seize the property, if nothing else. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else in this second section?
11223, Union Street. There's one thing I'd see happened to my street, I'd see it paved. And what I see, when I look at Union Street, it could be fixed. I haven't seen no holes or anything, but I seem to think that street could be fixed. Now, I'd see my alley be fixed up and paved, and that's one thing I'd like to see, top of my street. And I'd like to know if I could, is there any way, unless I could go down to the city garage and look around, see what type of stuff I could get from my apartment? I'm just wondering. But I pass.
Thank you, William. Paul?
Hi, Daniel. Paul Moran, 63, North Fourth Street. Heard quite a few issues tonight. I'm kicking off tonight with a Newark Problem Series. Things that I'm aware of in the city that need to be brought out more publicly and what they are. This pertains to 325 West Main Street, the first one in the series. It's the old former Worthinghouse plant, now Midstate Warehouses is using the property. The owner is Lee Zaworski. He has a Hebron Post Office box address. The problems with it is broken windows, they're over the sidewalk and grounds, there's overgrowth of plants, weeds, trees. There's boards that are hanging down, and they're falling off. There's broken-up sidewalks around the property. It's just another problem that needs to be addressed. But I'm gonna make a regular series each time, and I won't include a photo or photos with each of the properties that I will bring up, to make it more understanding and clear up to make it more understanding and clear to people, instead of verbally saying, "Here just happened right," and I'll have pictures too included, which will help everybody out, I hope. And, you know, we've heard a lot of serious problems tonight, and I hope that all the elected officials here will do something and work on each of these problems that have been brought up tonight. I mean, everybody gets gungho election time, they get into office, then it kinda like, uh, the mood kinda slacks off. Instead, still have a gungho attitude and spirit the whole time a person's in office, whether it's local, state, or federal. And here, you're getting ready for November, everybody's gonna get gunghoed up again, and then it kinda, after the election, you're kinda, uh, everybody slacks off and, you know, goes back to their old routines, I guess. But just gotta keep that gungho attitude the whole time that a person's in office. And, you know, work for the benefit of the taxpayers and the people that's put everybody in office. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul.
Daniel Crawford, one sixty-three South Second Street. Economic growth should always be celebrated. As of late, we've heard and read a great deal of praise about job creation at the national, state, and even local level. Then again, we need to be sure that the gains are enjoyed by all who are willing to work hard. Right now, despite our large pool of citizens ready and able to work as productive members of society, their options leave much to be desired. You may ask yourself, how can we turn things around? Aren't we all merely at the market's unpredictable mercy? Not entirely. At a local level, the government can contribute to minimizing income inequality, in part by reserving its tax incentives for the creation of living wage jobs. Let's be honest, the people of Newark need something better and more reliable than part-time or temporary work. What will it take to build the economy we need? What are the prospective job creators telling us that they want? What are we asking the businesses already here to contribute? What is the game plan, and at what point are we supposed to see the fruits thereof? How much revenue has the city lost as a result of the tax abatements we've given? In what way have the people of Newark benefited from their city government starving itself? Would it not be preferable to withhold these types of temporary tax breaks for the businesses willing to both pay their fair share when the time comes, as well as replace the revenue lost by way of hiring workers to be paid enough that their income taxes can pick up the tab? Not only would this help us turn the corner in tax collection, but it could rebuild our social mobility, thus making Newark a better, more satisfying place to live. Although making a tax-free appeal to newcomers is part of a locale's duties to inspire growth, one thing that needs to change in every community is the duration of said abatements and the ability to get an eternal series of renewals each time it expires. At a certain point, this free ride has to end, and the cap should be set. If your business is unwilling to or incapable of contributing to the city's services like everyone else, then perhaps it is time to reevaluate your goals. What is the point of property taxes if every eligible property isn't taxed consistently? After all, who inherits the burden of taxes when a few aren't paying their part? The answer is that everyone pays a higher price, both in our direct taxation and in the indirect cost of the services cut when there isn't enough money. For this reason, we need a serious conversation about how best to develop a sustainable future. Through a smarter set of policies, we can set out to attract the jobs Newark needs and begin to restore our hope. No one likes to talk about taxes, but we can't pretend that our only budget problem is that we spend too much on wasteful things like paying firefighters and police dispatchers. Pledging an incentive to new businesses is understandable, and it would be great if we could continue to offer everyone this perk in perpetuity. However, just as it is unrealistic and fiscally irresponsible for us to say we're going to fully fund every project that we'd like the city to tackle, it is likewise inappropriate for us to keep passing the proverbial buck on funding the city. Again, I'm not saying that we should eradicate tax abatements altogether, just that we utilize such in a way which will benefit the whole of Newark in the long run.
I'm gonna deviate, once again, from my usual, you know, trend here, and to say, this past Thursday's meeting at the library was extremely productive, and as he said before in the past, I actually appreciate Mr. Fraser's comments. You know, we need as much input as possible, and I just thought there were a lot of, you know, incredible, incredibly good ideas at that meeting, and hope we continue to see a trend of that in the future with the public coming together and offering their input. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Crawford. Anyone?
I would like to know if we can get property maintenance out on that street, two interior houses down that no one's living in but the crackheads, and it's only a matter of time before one of them kids go in, one of them banded buildings and get killed. And our police department spends, I would say, ninety-five percent of their time on our street instead of the other places, and that's not good either. And another thing we have trouble with is four-wheelers on our street. They are always going down the sidewalks and stuff. It's crazy. In our four-way stop, we don't have a four-way stop anymore. We have a two-way stop, and no one stops in either one of them. Please do something about that also. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone from administration this evening? Honorable law director? Thank you, Mr. President, and I'll pass. Mr. Roletta?
Thank you, Mr. President, and I'll pass as well.
Thank you, Mr. Roletta. Mr. Blake?
Thank you, Mr. President. Call for Finance Committee meeting for next week, and it seems as though the people who spoke about the safety concerns, I don't know where the safety director went, but perhaps we could grab him before you leave tonight and talk with him. It seems like the property maintenance also reports to him, so he would be the fellow to talk to. So, maybe he just ran up to his office, but maybe, hopefully, before he leaves tonight, maybe he'll come back down, you can talk to him directly. That's for the house across the street from your restaurant, too, so...
Thank you, Jeremy.
But with that, I'll pass.
Thank you, Jeremy. Mr. Bub?
Pass, thank you.
Mr. Cost? I need to call for a Service Committee meeting for next Monday. Thank you. With that, I'll pass. Mrs. Floyd?
Personnel Committee next week to discuss both part-time firefighters and part-time safety inspectors. Secondly, the final Community Roundtable meeting is this Wednesday at First Presbyterian Church at twelve o'clock with Mr. Mark Mather there, taking a presentation. I'm sure he's gonna discuss some of what's going on in Newark, especially downtown with everything that's going on. For those of you who haven't had a chance to go down there, go down and see what South Second Street that's finished looks like. I know we'd like to have it all done like this, and it's not gonna happen, but South Second Street looks really nice, and it gives you a clue of what downtown is gonna look like when it's done. And I guess I'd say, as the whole south side and the east side of, the east part of the South Second Street, I don't know how to say this right, but in front of Wendy's. Wendy's Drive-Thru is gonna be impossible to get to. So, I would say if we, as citizens and as members of council, could occasionally go to La Coloma or Wendy's, which are gonna be harder to get to, to support those businesses, because it's gonna be several months, and I think Wendy's is gonna take a big hit. And I think if we could, you know, park somewhere and walk over there and get what we need or whatever, it would be very helpful. Excuse me. With that, I'll pass.
Thank you, Mrs. Floyd. Mr. Guthrie?
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, first, I wanted to, I wanna thank Councilman Blake for the meeting you hosted at the library. I think it was very good, and I think we heard some very good input from citizens and got some good ideas. The one thing that I wanted to just mention about the part-time issue, because I've heard some folks say, and there's been some blogging, that by council not acting on ordinance fifteen twenty-one, that the, that we stopped the administration from looking at part-time firefighters, or stopped them from researching. There's nothing in this legislation that stops anybody from researching anything. Our charter, in my opinion, is clear that council creates positions, and, you know, it's our duty to pass this kind of legislation and to do our due diligence. I mean, and I know I'm not the only one that's done this. I've been researching other communities to find out how it works and how it doesn't work. Some communities have had, will say that there's tremendous turnover and that the cost of the turnover because of the equipment is significant. But I do think it's sort of incumbent upon all of us to do our own research, and there's nothing in this legislation that stops anybody from researching this issue. So, it's not about research, it's about this council doing what our charter says our responsibility is. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Guthrie. Miss Hall?
Thank you. I will pass.
Thank you, Miss Hall. Mr. Johnson?
Oh, pass.
Mr. Marmee?
Yes, just a couple of quick comments. One thing while we're sitting here, as far as thirty-nine South Sixth Street and forty-five South Sixth Street, which would be the only ones that I see in that area, they are owned by Ross Heinz, and both those properties are, it's either one of those addresses, and those are the only two addresses that I saw with odd numbers that were in that vicinity. So, thirty-nine and forty-five South Sixth Street, the owner lives in Mount Vernon, Ohio, eight oh four West Sugar Street. And as far as alleys, I know I've heard a lot of comments, and Mrs. Floyd and I were actually in the meeting prior to this, about alleyways and being paved. It's just a matter of priorities, our streets. We're still filling potholes and making repairs to streets before they even get to the alleys. I know that the administration would love to get to those quicker, but it's a lesser priority than our streets at this point. All I can advise, and I do this with everyone, if somebody makes a comment to me, I go right to that C-click-fix on the Internet, and I plug it in, and they know that it's on the radar then. And the more people that go online and do that, the better the situation. So, that's the best way to communicate with them. They are looking at that consistently, and I know they do react to that very efficiently, and it also reduces the number of phone calls, saves time if I'm not calling them and bugging them about it. So, if you can get online and get on that C-click-fix on the Newark website, it is a very efficient tool for citizens to go ahead and just put in there a pothole or a hole in an alleyway, even include alleyways. It's fine to put those in there, too. And with that, I pass.
Thank you, Mr. Marmee. Mr. Rapp?
Thank you. I just wanted to say, Mrs. Floyd, it's an excellent idea to go downtown and patronize those businesses, especially the ones that are gonna have a tough time getting to. And with that said, I'll remind everybody that our parking garage is back and open. If you wanna park someplace, park at the parking garage, take a nice leisurely stroll. It's actually closer to do that than it is to walk from Elder Beerings to Dick's in the mall.